Hey everybody, everybody, welcome, welcome. It is Raging Chickens Out to Coop Live. Yes, here we are. It is Monday, July 26, 2021, and Out to Coop Live, as you may or may not know, we talk to progressives, activists, and troublemakers of all sorts, right from our own backyards and all across the country. But tonight, we've got an open phones, right? So we don't have any guests tonight. We're taking a little, picking some stuff out for the news, kind of reordering, reorienting ourselves a little bit. Um, I'll talk about that in a second. But yeah, as you recall, so on Fridays, Sean Kitchen and I break down the good, the bad, and the ugly in state and national politics, and check out the Wednesday show with Cyril Micalaico. Yes, Cyril is a progressive columnist from the Bucks County Courier Times and The Intelligencer, and he joins me to drill down into Bucks County, Pennsylvania, and international politics. You can get all our shows by subscribing to our podcasts on Podbean, iTunes, Spotify, wherever you get your podcasts. Yes, and I am Kevin Mahoney, if I didn't mention that already. Had a little glitch, for those folks who are watching live on YouTube right now, with the, for some reason, the audio feed for our intro song has kind of gotten me a little distracted because it's getting this hesitation to it. But I need to put that aside for the evening and focus, Kevin, focus. You can help support this show by becoming a patron for as little as five bucks a month. You do that at patreon.com/RCpress. And if you listen to this show on the Podbean app, right, as part of our regular podcast, you can also kind of hit that Patreon, hit that patron button up top two as well. We had a special patron kind of join us last week, which I was very, very kind of thrilled about, although they were anonymous on the Podbean app. But yeah, we checked that out. You can also help the show if you head on over to our YouTube channel, if you're not there already, and hit that subscribe button, like this stream, and you know, hit that little notification bell so you know every time that we go live. We are also broadcasting tonight live on riverside.fm, and you can join us live on riverside.fm and call in during the second half of the show tonight. There's details for that in the show notes for tonight's show on our YouTube channel. So if you're watching it live stream, you can check that out. Word of warning, as I say every week, if you are going to kind of join the call-in section, make sure that you're joining on riverside.fm. Make sure that you are kind of shutting off the volume on your YouTube, on the live stream, even if you can close that program all out if you want to, simply because you don't want to have the feedback come in. You know, if you call in to radio show, they ask you to turn the volume down of the show. It's the same principle here, just so we don't get the lag and we don't get the kind of feedback. Anyways, for more PA progressive talk tonight and every night of the week, you can check in, check out with the Rick Smith Show. Man, my words are not coming out right tonight. You can tune into the Rick Smith Show's livestream at 9:00 PM Eastern on his YouTube channel, Twitter, or Facebook, or wherever you kind of find your livestream. You can also subscribe to his daily podcast, wherever you get your podcasts. And you can check out the Rick Smith Show on like Free Speech TV on Saturday nights and, brand new, on WBAI in New York. I believe it's six to eight, I want to say. Check that though. You could look them up and WBAI in New York, you can listen to him live there. You can watch his livestream, so you can watch him on Free Speech TV. Freaking congratulations to Rick for all the kind of success he's been having lately. It's awesome. And shout out to his producer Brett too as well, which has been doing a bang-up job over there at the Rick Smith Show. And you must check out, if you haven't already, the Sisters of the Night Caucus podcast. Yes, the amazing PA women stirring the political cauldron behind this podcast rock the house, and they know where the bodies are buried. Spooky, right? You bet. Well, make sure to follow them on Twitter at @TheNightCaucus and subscribe to their podcast on Anchor, Spotify, iTunes, or wherever you get your podcasts. Yes, do check them out. They've had some great shows. I just got finished listening to the show they had with Representative Sarah Innamorato a couple of weeks back, and I just started listening to their podcast from this past week, a little bit behind, I'm kind of catching up. But check them out, great shows. Attention all the gamers out there, The Game Inn, that's with two N's. The Game Inn is a Quakertown-based, black family-owned gaming store. They're friends of the show, and they've got everything for Retro N64s, latest consoles, video games for all platforms, collectibles, action figures, Funko Pops, you name it. And the kids, you know, during the school year, you know, they got those report cards, they get that A, head on over to The Game Inn, right, and they get a discount on their purchases, right? Check them out on their Facebook page, follow them on Twitter at @TheGameIn. And by the way, I just found out randomly that I was down the shore, when we were down the shore, kind of a couple of weeks ago for the vacation, one of my friends, one of my son's friends was down there, and we kind of got, I don't know how we were talking about it, but I was talking about The Game Inn and talking about this show, and they're like, "Oh my God, Robbie," you know, their son, "he loves it over there. He's there over all the time." So I was very thrilled, and I told them, "Head on over there, tell Robbie, make sure that he mentions Raging Chicken Press." And if you heard about Raging Chicken, and you head on over to The Game Inn, make sure you let them know that you heard about it right here. Special shout out also goes to Jonathan Mann, who wrote our intro song, "There Are No People in the Future." Check out all his great stuff on his YouTube page and follow him on Twitter at @SongOfDayMan. That's @SongOfDayMan on Twitter. Well, on tonight's show, if I can get my lips working correctly, that things should kind of gradually kind of, I don't know, have some semblance of order, I guess it is. But I was gonna have an open phone show tonight. I was attempting to, well, one of the options for tonight was to have some folks from the Penridge School District on to talk about what is happening in their races. The Penridge, I should say, Penridge School Board candidates. But it was a bit of a quick turnaround, and we thought, "Well, listen, we're gonna, let's, instead of doing that, why don't we head on, why don't we kind of set up some shows in the future so it wasn't kind of rushed, and that we could talk a little bit about how to, how to set that show up?" And so, kind of today, I was like, "You know what? Instead of trying to rush this thing and trying to put this in, let's kind of wait and let's do it right." Because the school board races are becoming really the front lines of our future in so many ways. You know, we've talked about this on the Wednesday show with Cyril Micalaico, Sean and I have talked about this on our Friday Politics Roundup. But really, it does, it does look like this is where the, the far-right are making their, their play, really, for 2022. I mean, it's not just about the local school board races, of course it's that, but it's also about, you know, a power play. And we're seeing this happen at the same time we see voter suppression happening across the country, and right here in Pennsylvania. We see this at a time when, you know, the right thinks that it's kind of landed on its messaging with this critical race theory, like, you know, anti-critical race theory nonsense. But, you know, really, it's about kind of, you know, doubling down on white supremacy. I don't know how else you say it. I mean, that's really what's going on here is that, you know, it's about America as a white supremacist country, a whites-only country, or a white-dominated country. And they'll, you know, throw up any kind of like flares and fireworks they can to kind of like get us to think that the, you know, the hordes are coming. But really, it's really, that's what's in their minds, right? They see demographic change, they see, you know, new generations being much more open to kind of wanting to learn about actual history, not just some sort of whitewashed PR version of American history. And they're scared because then they know that the jig is up for their privilege, right? So they're doing whatever they can to distract us and to kind of whip up the kind of white supremacist, I don't know, froth. And they're doing it, you know, in a lot of ways through school boards. And we've talked about this on the show. We've, you know, we're seeing it happening in Bucks County, we're seeing it happening in the kind of western part of the state, we're seeing it happening kind of all over the place. And, you know, I don't know if people have been following this, but, you know, there was these dark money groups that were funding these kind of QAnon conspiracy theorists, or conspiracists, I should say, hardly theorists, conspiracists and kind of, you know, you know, people who are just ingesting way too much of Newsmax and kind of right-wing kind of like proto-fascist propaganda. And they're running for school board, and they're running to kind of protect our schools and save the children, right, as the QAnon people love to talk about. You know, they're always, they're always crazy with their messaging, right? And we're gonna talk about some of that in a little bit too. But there you have it. I mean, that's kind of what we're gonna do. So tonight, instead of, you know, having a guest on tonight and do it a little bit, we had some weird stuff happen. I can't remember when we had, on Friday, if you recall, on Friday, we did not have our normal show. Sean kind of was away for his niece's birthday, and I had some stuff just kind of come up at the last minute. It's like nothing was super problematic, but stuff that all of a sudden had to get done, and there wasn't any way to kind of get it done without me doing it. So we just canceled the show on Friday, and so I thought that tonight, we just kind of do a little bit of kind of news, combination news review, and hopefully to hear from some of you. So what, I was thinking about best ways to do this, right? And I think that in the future, for when we do the, the open phones, and even when we just do our regular interview show, I'm also gonna release and put out kind of promos for the riverside.fm channel. So I know that some people who have joined on YouTube, watching our YouTube stream, they'll switch over to riverside.fm when it's the kind of call-in show, and they'll call in at that point. I heard back from a couple listeners who basically said that, "Hey, you know what? I'd be fine with, you know, starting the show, listening to riverside.fm for the whole show, instead of having to flip over." So, "Oh, that's kind of not a bad idea." So I'm gonna start promoting that too as well. So if those folks who do want to call in, you don't have to, don't have to kind of switch kind of in mid-stream. We will, I'll do my best, I don't know if I'll do it tonight, but I'll do my best that normally, I'll have a kind of a music break when we're gonna do that switch over, give you a couple of minutes to kind of log into riverside.fm, or you can even do it right now if you are not partially YouTube streamed. You can also join in the YouTube comment section, let me know what's on your mind tonight. We can go as long as you go, as far as I'm concerned tonight. I'm feeling like in that freewheeling kind of mood. So what I'm gonna do right now is that I am going to, I'm gonna drop a invite link for, to be an audience member at riverside.fm. And so if anytime that you want to head on over there for the call-in section for the second part of the show, you're welcome to do that. You can also scroll down in the show notes under our YouTube livestream, and information about how to do that is right there. Okay, so, what to do, what to say? Some of you may have already seen this on Twitter. So I was driving around today, I had some kind of errands to run, and so, just, I was out and about, right? I was out and about in my car, now my kids are with me, and I'm just kind of driving around, and we hit 309, and on 309 in Bucks County, going into Montgomery County, on what is kind of called around here, the Bucksmont area, I'm just, there's this car in front of me, and I'm trying to figure out what the heck is up, what's, what is that on their car? Right? Can I just look and see what's on their car? So I head on over, you know, and I get up behind this car, and I'm checking out what's on this car, and there's actually a fairly kind of large, displayed bumper sticker, right, that says, "Remember Benghazi." Right? "Remember Benghazi." Right? So that's like, if that's not great enough already, so I pull up a little bit closer, right, and I end up getting a picture of this, and I posted it on Twitter. And in the picture, there's also, like, I thought it was initially of like a cross, right? I thought it's, there's little thing that says "stop," and there's like a, like a cross. And I was trying to think, "What the hell is that?" Right? And it's like, "Oh, it's not a cross, it's an airplane." And all those things that are going across are chemtrails, right? And it says like, "Stop Toxic Climate Engineering." Right? And I, you know, on the picture, I, the picture, I could look at it, there's a website there too as well, I think, and one of them I could read it, but, and the one I put it on Twitter, you can't read it so well. But I was like, "Oh my God, this is gold," right? This is gold. So stop, Ben, you know, stop, like, you know, toxic climate engineering, which, you know, just, let's be clear, those are just like fossil fuel emissions, folks. And those are toxic, and that is climate engineering, right? But it's climate engineering by the fossil fuel industry and these right-wing groups that kind of like refuse to believe that climate change is real. That's what those little chemtrail things are, right? Not some kind of like mystical kind of microorganism climate manipulation scam. It's just freaking fossil fuels, right? That's it. Right? So that's just beautiful, right? It's just beautiful. So then, the second thing, literally, on my way back home, there's this house, right? And it's like a horse farm kind of house, it's on the corner of Callow Hill and Branch Road in Percasie, okay, in Percasie, Pennsylvania. And from what I understand, this guy has some, or this family or whatever, has some kind of standing in the, in either like, you know, the Bucks County GOP, or the, you know, the Penridge GOP, whatever it might be. And he's got these, you know, those white fences that go around horse farms. And on that corner, every time there's an election that's brewing, right, you can count on this dude from kind of like nailing up these eight-by-ten sheets of plywood with some kind of, like, the latest kind of right-wing messaging that is going, they're gonna use to drive kind of white voters to the polls, right? And I've been waiting for it, right? There's, there's a sign that went up last week, it's just kind of like a painted American flag that says "Faith, Family, Freedom!" Right? You know, as you'd expect, faith, family, freedom, like, you know, the three F's that we all learn in school, faith, family, freedom, right? So, but I've been waiting, it's okay, well, that can't be it, right? Because, you know, that, faith, family, freedom, whatever, that's, that's not, that's just not gonna drive kind of, you know, that's not gonna get the frothing going, right? That doesn't kind of put the fear of zombie hordes rushing at you and you, right? Right. So what happens here is that now the two other signs on either side of the flag go up, right? And one says, "Values, Beliefs, Identity. Taught in Home. Academics Taught in School. Stop DEI. Penridge for Educational Liberty." Okay? Now, for those of you who don't know what DEI is, DEI stands for Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, right? It is, they're, it's an initiative that is happening, you know, kind of like all sorts of places in different parts of the country, right? But like, it's happening in the Penridge Schools too as well. And it's ways like, family members and community members are kind of part of the school district, kind of like administration and teachers, they're all looking at better ways to serve the kids in their community, right? Because, look, you cannot, you can no longer like depend on like, you know, everyone in your community, just, you know, knowing everybody else, and based upon kind of one specific church or two church backgrounds, and that's all they know, right? No, right? I mean, Percasie, Pennsylvania, where I live, right, is a growing community. There's new housing going up all the time, right? And, and guess what? The people that are moving here are kind of like all over the map, right? I mean, there's kind of like Latinos move into the areas, some African-Americans move the area, but there's young white folks move in the area, there's hipsters move into the area, right? You know, there's Vespas like buzzing around town every once in a while, you know, that kind of thing, right? So, you know, and, you know, and there's folks that are, you know, some that formerly are kind of moved from Philly, others that are moved from other parts of Pennsylvania, other folks that just moved from kind of down the street, right? And so you've got a kind of a range of folks here, and, you know, and it's not just, you know, everybody's not on the exact same, like, say, economic level, right? Everybody is not kind of white Protestant, right? Everybody is kind of not necessarily kind of, you know, can name the generations of people in their families who lived in Percasie for their entire life, right? So, I mean, it's just, it's like so many other communities, right? I mean, this is just kind of what, you know, what happens. And so, like, diversity, equity, inclusion is one of the ways, right, to ensure that all our kids are doing, regardless of what their racial background is, what their ethnic background is, what their religious background is, right? And the equity one, we want to make sure that, that, you know, kids that are poor are getting, are being treated in the same kind of way, and are giving the resources that they need in order to be kind of successful learners, right? And inclusion, right, to make sure that, you know, regardless, if you, if you have a disability, right, we don't want you to kind of be pushed to the margins, right? We want to make sure that you're kind of like included in the community, right? And how do we do that in an effective way, right? Not just by having a class where we can put those students in daycare for the day, but how do we actually kind of like make our schools responsive places, right, for communities? I'll give you an example, is that there was, there was a kid in one, in, in the school where, where my kids went, you know, and, and he, and, and he had, you know, he was in a wheelchair. And I hate to say it like this, but I'm gonna say it like this. When I was growing up, if there was a kid with the kind of like physical disability that, that that kid had, um, he would have been marginalized in my school that I grew up in, right? He's this sweet kid, right? And, you know, because he couldn't do exactly what all the other kids would do, he would have been marginalized, right? And that would have been an added impact on that kid's life, right? With not having friends, right, being forced to kind of go in other classrooms while the other kids went out and played, right? Always being reminded that he's different and he's got a disability, and he's not like everybody else, so he's not gonna be able to be allowed. That would have been the context growing up. And that, that was not because like, I would say, me and the other kids were, kind of would be cruel to that person. I'm not even talking about that level, of course, you know, those kids have to deal with that regardless. But just in the way that school day was structured, because, you know, everyone's thinking, we weren't thinking about, you know, different individual kids' needs, you know? Now, my sister, as you've heard me say on the show before, was mentally handicapped, so I kind of had a win-to-win to the other side of that, you know, and it's, 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 it was not a pretty picture at that time. So that kind of inclusion is, ask that kind of questions, is that how do we make sure that we don't just kind of sacrifice, you know, kids because they don't fit into what we kind of deem to be normal, right? In terms of those disabilities? And if there are kids that have severe disabilities, right, like, how do we make sure that we have resources in our schools that can actually kind of like meet them, right, and don't just like warehouse them, as it used to be the case, right? That's, that's important, right? And of course, inclusion also means, you know, for those students who, who kind of aren't from kind of like the mainstream gender assignments, right? You know, students who are, who, you know, from the LGBTQ communities, who are having to kind of grapple with sexuality as they kind of are kind of emerging into kind of adolescence and adulthood, right? I mean, how do we make sure that we don't send those kids down the road towards like psychological despair and, and like disproportionately high rates of suicide, right? I mean, that's what these, that's what the DEI is about, right? DEI commissions are about to kind of, "Let's consider everybody who's in our community and find ways to respond to that." And of course, educators, again, not all of them, right, but educators by and large are interested in those questions, right? Because they know that there's ways of kind of like interacting with students, and they know the kind of resources that are involved. And when they don't, guess what? Parents do. So that's what, that's who's on this community, thinking about ways of kind of integrating all this stuff, and making sure that our schools are, you know, the bastion for kind of like, you know, taking kids and moving them towards kind of democratic citizenship, right? Because let's remember, these are public schools, right? The purpose of public schools is not just, and I'll, you know, as they say, academics taught in school are not just kind of like reading, writing, and arithmetic, right? It's also about history. It's also about science. It's also about truth. It's about narrative. It's about story, right? It's about who we are, right, and how we become participants in a democracy. And as our democracy is increasingly multiracial, right, then how do we prepare kids for that world? Not just for a job, but to be citizens, not dupes, but citizens, participants. And I'm, like, I'm using the word citizen here really broadly too. I mean, participant in deciding over the direction of the future, right? People who are not just adapting to what's given to them, but are helping and taking an active part in creating and shaping the future to come. And these DEI initiatives, right, are like, I mean, a really small piece of that. I mean, it'd be like parents coming together and saying, "How do we make sure that the kids in our neighborhood are getting what they need?" Right? I mean, it's really simple. But instead, what has happened, right? This is why this, this, you know, whatever, this, this right-wing ideologue on the corner of Callow Hill and, and Branch Road in Percasie, that what they're doing is they're, they're kind of taking this thing that we've seen at the national scale, critical race theory, right? Which of course, as we've, as you know, Cyril and I talked about on the show on Wednesday, and that Sean and I have talked about repeatedly on the show, go read Cyril's column, most recent column in the, the Bucks County Courier Times, The Intelligencer, who's talking about the critical race theory, looking at some of the history of that stuff, right? Critical race theory, just so it's, because we're all clear about this, it was a legal academic area of inquiry to look at ways to try to understand how racism persists, right, despite the legal kind of, say, you know, barriers such as like, like the right to vote have gone away, right? So it's looking at all the ways that are kind of legal. That's where kind of it started from, and of course, it's bigger than that now. But it's an academic produce, you know, it's, it's an academic kind of intellectual scholarly kind of pursuit. And it's been around since like the 80s or 90s. I remember reading about it in grad school, like back in, back in the 90s, so, you know, this is not new. So that's what critical race theory is. But it sounds interesting to the right wing, and so they latch on it, right? Because somebody probably mentioned it somewhere in some of their chat rooms, and so they do. So they take this thing, critical race theory, which is an academic pursuit, it is not being taught in our schools. Really what they're doing is they're saying, "Oh my God, our schools are no longer catering only to white kids, and are not discriminating, actively discriminating against black kids, against Latinx kids, right? They might have, "Language programs," right, that might teach our kids that American is not the only language spoken here," right? Things like that. And so, and they're folding that into this notion that, you know, we are increasingly becoming a multiracial, a multiracial democracy, and that white folks are no longer gonna be the majority in this country, right? And they fear the end of white supremacy and their privilege. And that's really what it's about. And they'll do whatever the hell it takes in order to kind of maintain white dominance, maintain white supremacy. So they take this thing, this academic area, you know, thing called critical race theory, and then they kind of say, "Anytime that you see your kids talking about race, that's, that's the school district, the government, damn teachers, like shoving stuff down your throat, teaching you to be ashamed of yourself in your country," like all that kind of nonsense, right? So that's what they do. And so they take this fear, they take this term, critical race theory, and then when they're going into these school boards, because there's these diversity initiatives, the diversity, equity, and inclusion initiatives, they're basically saying that DEI, diversity, equity, inclusion, DEI, they're saying that DEI is like, you know, the Trojan horse that's gonna teach your white kids to hate themselves and hate America, right? That's what that's all about. If you go to these school boards, you listen carefully in these school board meetings, right? The, the, the ways that people talk about this, right? That, you know, just parents will talk about this. It's pretty, it's, it's hard to kind of find your way around it, right? And it's hard to kind of think about the ways to kind of go through it. Because, here's why, because they'll say things, just like that sign says, "Values, beliefs, and identity should be taught at home. Schools for academics," right? And, you know, I'm thinking like, "Well, if the values you're teaching are home, kind of line up with QAnon conspiracy, that Newsmax is a legitimate news source, right, that the moon landing never happened, then you're teaching pretty effed up values at home, folks. And that if anything, what we are required in a democratic country, that is, a country that wants to, or at least aspires to, have people govern themselves, it means that people need to be able to kind of critically examine the world and deal with actual facts, actual history, and grapple with the contradictions and the problems and the conflicts in productive ways. Not just kind of swallow like the, the latest round of right-wing propaganda and say that there, right? Or have some freaking preacher kind of like give you all this, you know, these lies about what the hell's going on, okay? these lies about what the hell's going on. Okay? So that's, that's all I'm saying. So that's what they're doing, right? And you know, I look, some of these parents really have been kind of like, they've, they've been, they've, they've been bamboozled by this, you know, this, this white, white, right? Interesting. White, right wing media sphere. Right? Which is telling that, that, you know, that they're trying to kind of like educate your kids in, in ways that are different. Or that there's telling you that you're bad parents and you can't do it. Right? And that's never what it is. Like the purpose of what you do at home and what you're teaching and values, beliefs, identities at home, that's one thing. Right? But what we're teaching as society to actually be active and critical participants in a democratic culture that's increasingly multi, like, um, multicultural. And diverse. Right? That's the purpose of schooling, not just reading, writing and arithmetic. Right? So we're talking about things like history, right? History is not just like, you know, the great white presidents. It's grappling with the difficulties of our history. Of the promise as well as the genocide. Right? As the, as the, as, as the freedom as well as the slavery. Right? That's what it means to be a critical, you know, citizen in the world. Is to not kind of turn a blind eye to the past, but really kind of internalize it. Right? So that we can kind of better grapple with the future. You know, and these folks that want to do it. So let me say one of the things about the sign. So I mentioned on the one side, the values, belief, identity taught in home, economics taught in school, stop DEI, blah, blah, blah. And there's Penridge for educational liberty. Um, I'm not saying you have to, but if you head on over to, you know, Penridge for educational liberty and you become a troll, you know, more power to you. That's all I have to say. Oh God, uh, Christopher just kind of, uh, dropped in on YouTube, say Russ Diamond was on this today. Um, oh God. Fantastic. Uh, that's out in Camp Hill. So, you know, this has not just happened in my school district, right? This has happened across the state. Okay. Anyways, the sign on the other side of the faith family freedom flag is, oh, faith family freedom flag. It's the four Fs. I missed, mistake. It said three. Okay. Um, it says, it's easier to build strong children than repair broken men. And it's a quote from Frederick Douglass. Now this is how freaking disingenuous and insidious these folks are. The people who are trying to prevent any accurate teaching about American history and race. Right? They're going to appropriate a quote from Frederick Douglass as a way to try to kind of say, see, even a black guy said it. And try to say that Frederick Douglass is saying the same thing as these right wing extremists are saying. Right? It's just really remarkable. So anyways, that was the start of my day, right? That was kind of like, you know, going around with errands and everything and, and, uh, it was like, you know, it just got me thinking about how kind of important some of this stuff is. And you look at what's going on right now in our, in our state and our country. Um, I'm worried. I mean, I don't know about you, but I'm worried about the, um, the, say, the, like Democratic Party's ability to actually like, understand what the threat is all about. So I want to get into that for a second. Um, but before, you know, I forgot, I forgot to mention at the top of the show, I'm very sorry about this. We also had a new patron, um, that I want to say thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you to Emily for becoming a new patron. Um, uh, Emily became a patron, um, last week, which I was absolutely thrilled about. Uh, welcome Emily, welcome into the fold. And just a reminder that you too can be like Emily and you can become a patron of this show, but become by going to patreon.com slash RC press. And you can become a patron and, um, for as little as like, you know, the price of a good beer once a month, like five bucks a month. Right? Um, so I want to thank Emily. I'm sorry Emily, that I did not thank you at the top of the show. I know I gave you a shout out on Twitter, but, um, I really wanted to kind of say thank you here too as well. Um, okay, so we've got about, we're about 20 of right now. Um, so here's what I'm going to do. Um, I'm going to take a, um, a quick, say musical break. Right? Um, and it should just be kind of like a minute or so. I'll take a quick musical break, um, and go to break. And so then if you do want to kind of call into the show, just make sure you scroll down, uh, look at the, the show notes in, um, uh, the show notes on our YouTube channel, um, for today's show. And it'll be, there'll be a link there that you can click on and you can kind of enter the show. And you'll be able to call in. I'd love to hear, um, from you all, what's on your mind, what you're thinking. And, um, yeah, but I'll have some more stuff to kind of come back to too as well. So, um, don't feel any pressure. Um, if you have, um, kind of additional stuff that you want to kind of throw into the YouTube chat. I mean, Christopher is saying here too, is what I think it's absolutely dead on. Like the critical race theory debate is the same thing as the Confederate flag guy telling you it's about our history. Who's the R of course, in that, you know, uh, in that sentence, you know what I'm saying? Um, so that's exactly what to do. Okay. So we're going to take a quick break here. Um, I'm going to try to, uh, do this little thing. And so for those folks who are watching live on YouTube, uh, YouTube, I don't know why I said it like that. On YouTube, um, we're going to kind of go to a B rate back screen and you'll hear some music. And then we're going to come back in and hopefully take some of your calls, um, take some of your comments. And then I'm going to dig into some stuff on voter suppression. Um, I also got to, got to talk about billionaires in space this week, you know what I'm saying? And we should maybe get into some Kathy Barnett too. I don't know if you heard about her too as well, but anyway, we'll get in there. All right. So I'm going to play the little, uh, the little special little, uh, uh, funky transition and, uh, we'll get right into that. Let me just take a peek here and see how long this one is. That's not the one I want. This one's not the one I want. Sounds like this one, this one. There was this really cool, uh, transition that they had that was part of, uh, we'll do that one. Okay. All right. So I'm going to play a little transition and then I'll be back in just one minute. This is Kevin Mahoney, editor and founder of Raging Chicken. We'll be back right after this. There it is, everybody. The little funky transition tune. Uh, yeah. So if you do want to join in, um, please, you'll click on that link in the show and I'll throw the, uh, the link. Right in our YouTube chat tonight too as well. So if you do want to, you'll click on that, it'll basically, it'll take you into, um, the Riverside kind of, uh, lounge, as it were, the green room. It'll ask you to choose your mic and that kind of stuff. Um, and then you'll be able to kind of chat within Riverside app and you'll also be able to call in. Um, but feel free to kind of throw in your comments on YouTube too as well. I want to give a little bit of a shout out to a couple of folks, um, here at Time. And I want to see, this is like the kind of, you know, this is, this is what we're going to need more of, right? So this, uh, this weekend, we were painting my son's room. Okay? And, um, my son was downstairs, kind of, I don't know, getting something or taking a break. I don't remember what it was. And there was a knock at the door. He comes up and says, hey, there's these people here that I want to talk to you where they are. And so I'm like, oh God, it's just people, people with like business cards. Like, oh, great. And there's been like people doing roofing in our, in our, you know, in our neighborhood. And I'm thinking like, okay, great. Here we go. More roofing. I'll tell them, no, not at this time. Yes, I know there's moss growing over here, but I'm not ready to do it yet. Blah, 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 blah. Right? But instead it was a couple of candidates for political office, a couple of Democrats, um, two women. Right? Um, Robin Robinson, who is currently the, uh, Bucks County Recorder of Deeds. Right? Um, she came by and she came by with Antonetta Stan, Stan Chu, Stancu, Stancu, Antonetta. Right here. Um, and they both came by, we had a great kind of discussion. I was also pretty kind of thrilled that, uh, she was, uh, or both, or, or Antonetta actually had heard of Raging Chicken, which I was actually like doubly like thrilled about. Had heard of Cyril Micalaco and knew what's going on, but she is basically, uh, running, running for district attorney. Okay. And so the big came in and we had, we're going to have them both on the show, kind of coming up in the weeks coming up, which I'm actually really, really thrilled about. Um, and we kind of talked about the need to just win. Right? To get people activated and get out there and win. I was also pretty thrilled that, uh, um, Antonetta Stan, Stancu, Stancu. Uh, I hate the fact that I'm, I don't, um, have the correct pronunciation of her name, but, um, I'll ask her that when she's on the show and we'll connect that. But she basically, um, has come up through the emerge program too as well. So, and I told her about Sisters of the Night Caucus podcast too as well. She'd connect up with the folks over in there. And, um, that, you know, it's so great to actually have Democrats knocking on my door because this is probably, this is only the second time. I've lived in Percasie now for God, almost 13 years. And this is the second time Democrats have knocked on my door. The second time. It's in Bucks County. Bucks County, that is PA one, which is often considered one of the must win districts or the most competitive districts in the state of Pennsylvania for the nation. Right? This is where like the Fitzpatrick brothers have kind of ruled, but through this kind of like, this notion that they're moderates. Right? Um, this is where, you know, because, because there's still a belief in establishment democratic circles that Democrats can't win here. So they, what do they do? They go and they kind of like the unions, right? Um, like PSEA, for example. PSEA, the teachers union endorsed Fitzpatrick over a democratic, um, challenger. Right? We had other progressive organizations, some environmental organization, Penn Environment, I believe was one of them too as well. Endorsed Fitzpatrick as opposed to a Democrat. Right? What you got to understand about elections too as well. When you have the unions and major environmental organizations get behind kind of a candidate, all the rest of the money dries up. All the other get out the vote operations, right? Progressive get out the vote operations go away. Why? Because very often those groups work together. And if PSEA comes into a district and endorses a Republican, the get out the vote people who are from a different organization are not generally going to go into that district and challenge PSEA, knowing that maybe, maybe down the road, that means that because PSEA works with this other organization that happens to be one of their funders, that they're not going to get that money. That's what happens. Right? So, you know, Democrats, and you know, I've started hearing this more and more. I've joined a couple, um, groups in Percasie now in Penridge, the Penridge area and Bucks County now, uh, that hope to get even more involved in. Um, then we do this and we start highlighting some of these local candidates too as well. So you're going to see more of that, um, coming out. I don't know if we're going to do that only on Out to Coop Live. We might do this as kind of special shows as kind of, you know, candidate showcase or whatever it might be. I don't know. We'll have some version of that, but I was really thrilled. I wanted to give them a shout out. Um, so Antonetta Stancu, Stancu for district attorney, um, she is there and, um, Robin Robinson, uh, recorder of deeds, um, who's running for reelection. So she was elected. I, I do want to say one thing that, uh, I want to say this about Robin Robinson, one of the things that she showed me. Uh, and this is a perfect example of what we need is she's got this binder and she showed me when she went into, you know, again, recorder of deeds. Right? It's not like the sexy position, right? It's not the sexy position that, you know, gives you lots of kind of, you know, eyeballs and news, you know, news interviews and all that kind of stuff. Right? It is a civil servant position, elected civil servant position, right? She showed me a picture of what she saw in the basement where all the records are, the Bucks County records were when she took office. And literally like mounds and piles of documents, of old ledgers, of old books, of old records in these giant Ziploc bags and just heaps on the floor. It, it just, it blows your mind. Just like thrown there, not organized. You needed to get access to one of those things? Good luck. And then she showed me what she and her administration did with those records. And she flips over the clipboard with a picture of what it looks like now. And there's, oh my God, shelves? Those ledgers and those records are ordered, organized in volumes and bound in chronological order or alphabetical order, however they keep them like this. But in such a way that if somebody came to your office and said, I'm looking for this kind of document, a person could go down to those stacks, find it because it's recorded, recorder of deeds, pull it off and bring it upstairs. Right? Who owns that house? Hold on a second. Let me get that for you. Right? So part of what we're doing here is we're electing people who are competent to the job. Right? So that we relearn that government doesn't have to mean bureaucracy that's trying to kind of stand in the way of between you and your freedom. But it actually makes life better for all of us. If I don't have to go through months of waiting in order to get access to a record, which I should be able to get as a member of the public. Right? And so if I don't have to wait for months, if I can do that, that day, or maybe wait a couple of days while they make the copies, that makes my life better. And so instead of going to an, a government office and seeing like, you're having to kind of fight with them over kind of like getting access to a document. And my experience then is that government does suck. Now you can go to the recorder of deeds and you're saying, hey, you know what? I, that's awesome. Right? Or at the very, at the very least, you walk away not having a bad impression. You're just like, oh, okay. I just conducted business. I'm done. Right? I could go on with my day. I didn't need to spend the entire day there. They had it organized. They were helpful. Right? Competence in governance, true representation is absolutely critical. Right? So that's kind of really important. So anyways, we're going to have them on the show and we're going to talk about them for what's going on here. Love to know what's on everybody's mind tonight. How people are making their way through the summer and all that kind of stuff too as well. Um, if anybody does want to kind of drop in and one has, was a comment, if you want to kind of call in, you can call in anytime. It'll show up, it'll pop up on my screen and I can let you in. Or you can just, uh, comment it too as well. I think I'll be able to see you in the chat too. Just write in there. Okay. So let me talk about something here. There, there was this piece that, um, this was actually the piece that got me thinking, you know what? I'd rather talk about this tonight than, uh, than try to force a show. Right? That's, I wasn't quite ready to go. Um, I was reading this article from Politico. Okay? And, um, this gets to the heart of some of the issues that we've been talking about on the show kind of for years now. Uh, the title of the article, um, it's by, uh, Maya King, David Siders and Daniel Lippman. It's in Politico. It's called we're effed, right? F hyphen, hyphen, hyphen ED, and that's a quote, colon, Dems fear turnout catastrophe from GOP voting laws. Okay. So as we know, what is happening nationwide is that Republicans in the states are passing laws to make it harder to vote. Right? And you know, I, I, I mentioned this a few weeks back. Chris Hayes on All In with Chris Hayes did a fantastic show, going back and looking at the ways that these laws have always been used um, to keep black people from voting, minorities from voting, young people from voting. That's how they've always been used. Right? They know they cannot be overtly racist. So they find other ways of arriving at the same outcomes through different means. Right? Chris Kovacs, you all remember that dude? Right? He became Trump's like voter guy, right? You know, he's notorious as being the one who figures out that. Okay. We need to suppress the black vote. We can't come out and say we want to stop people, black people from voting. So how do we arrive at that outcome? Right? Without saying we're doing it for racial reasons. So they do things like they've done in Georgia, right? So we're going to stop, you know, no Sunday voting. Right? And they don't say it's because we want to stop black people from voting. They say it's because it's traditionally, it's been the day of rest. Right? And we think it's important to honor those traditions. Right? And all the white Christians go, yeah, you know, you're right, you know? I remember when we wouldn't be able to kind of get liquor on, on Sundays back in the day because it was Sunday. It was the day of rest. It was a family day. I like family. I like rest. It's a great day. Stores were closed on Sundays. You got to spend, spend time home. You weren't out shopping. Right? All that nonsense. And so you get all these people thinking, that sounds rational, reasonable, good even. But the reason why they do that is because traditionally on Sundays, early voting on Sundays is when you have the souls to the polls program that buses come to black churches. Right? And not just black churches, but primarily black churches. And say, you know what? After services today, if you would like to vote, the bus is right there. It will take you there and we'll bring you back. And that was a huge success. Right? A huge success to encouraging more participation from African Americans. Right? But in Georgia, you know, Biden won Georgia by what? 12,000 votes? Two very narrow wins by Democratic senators, which gave Democrats the majority, or at least they tied it, but with Kamala. the majority or at least they tied it but with Kamala Harris it's blah 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 but the majority in the Senate control of the Senate right 12,000 votes maybe you can get there and maybe right you make it super hard for black people young people college students anyone else who might identify as kind of maybe leaning more democratic and sure yes we're going to disenfranchise some of our voters too but you know what disproportionately we're going to disenfranchise more minority voters more likely democratic voters right so that's what they're doing so they're doing that across the country and there was this I hit this paragraph okay um in the discussion where I was just like that's exactly it so let me lead you read you a couple paragraphs from this um from this article again this is from Politico from when was this uh today it was earlier today okay so they talk about there's a mayoral election in Atlanta and they're going to have a test run of this law okay and the Democrats are really freaking out because George like Georgia's voter suppression laws is pretty pretty severe so what happens it's okay here he goes so the state Democratic Party aims to confront the law by building on their voter education program established after the 2018 midterms they are training county chairs volunteers and voters on the laws terms and um on the laws terms in zoom and in-person sessions the goal according to one party official is to train volunteers and how to obtain a voter ID in all 159 of Georgia's counties the party also brought on um sorry um the party also brought on a new deputy political directors for black Latino and Asian outreach okay so essentially the solution that they're coming to is not like organize and fight back against this stuff it's like nope we're going to have to find ways around it right we're going to have to adapt okay have to adapt to this and just try to teach it right we have to we're going to have to out turn out these folks and educate our voters so all the resources are going into voter education and outreach and again I'm not opposed to that let me be clear because I think that look you you have to have you have to be able to fight on multiple fronts here right because if you're not able to get those laws turned back then you 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 have to make sure people need to get out you know get out to the polls so that's what they're doing so this November's mayoral election in Atlanta represents a test run of the law and how its requirements will impact voters while Democrats aim to apply the lessons from this elections to next year's midterms they recognize that the heavily black safely democratic city is a far is a far cry from a statewide race right so they're going to use that you know the Atlanta race to learn from it as a way to kind of problem solve right and so they say the problems that they encounter if the problems they encounter say they might be be a way for us to steer other counties away from those problems right so they got a mayor election in in Atlanta they're going to see these problems on here and then they're going to find a way to kind of get away from these problems um maybe and learn and kind of teach other folks right but it's like TikTok right I mean it's like like the time is is moving so you you have to get everybody to turn out in Atlanta you have to make sure because there's not enough time to turn it back and it's going to go forward for this election so you want to make sure voters know how to get there absolutely and then they're gonna say well maybe we can learn some lessons from this here's the key part quote what's missing however is an overarching tactical plan to counter the restrictions in the states where they stand to recap where they stand to wreak the most harm on democratic chances the party and its affiliated interest groups are preparing to spend millions of dollars litigating against restrictive voting laws and bolstering turnout operations but Democrats have been largely splintered in their response one reason widespread hopes and expectations that Washington or the courts will provide some remedy this is quote I don't think the Democratic Party as a whole is prioritizing this issue and its potential damage in the way that they should unquote said Doug Herman who was a lead male strategist for Barack Obama's twenty twenty eight and twenty twelve campaigns quote we just went through an insurrection that was stoked by voter fraud lies and the reaction to that from the Republican Party is to restrict the voting process so severely that only their voters can participate and I don't understand the lack of fierce resistance to that from Americans and Democrats okay so there you have it right this is the insider democratic operator right who's basically saying what the hell are they doing right what are these Democrats do I don't understand the sky is freaking falling like the you know the armies are marching and you're dithering around hoping like you know uh maybe maybe Uncle Joe will help us fingers crossed maybe the courts will right that kind of establishment democratic way of thinking is so misaligned to this moment in history it's it's infuriating right and I've had to unlearn this myself because like look I grew up I grew you know I was born in like you know I I'm a Gen Xer I grew up in the after the Supreme Court right had been the champion of civil rights have been the champion of women's rights but the champion of you know like like progressive legislation right the courts like what I grew up with like man the courts are they're our last chance they're the ones who are going to do right right but only over time do I learn that that was an that that Supreme Court the third grade Marshall Court was an aberration in the history of the court or read Ian Milheiser's work he'll show you right for the for the bulk of its history the Supreme Court has been on the side of like the wealth of the capitalist of white supremacy right of patriarchy I mean that's the history of the court and so I had to like unlearn that process but you know and so here you get the same thing like they're hoping that the courts are going to save them do I need to like remind you that Donald Trump just appointed let's see one two how many people what's the court now yeah three four five like no in his first term he appointed more people to the federal bench right all the other courts not Supreme Court right then Obama had his entire time right he was like just on a breakneck speed and that was McConnell's agenda in the Senate right he's been able to shift the court right three Supreme Court justices shift the court to an ideological body that is not going to be split on this five forward decisions because they have a conservative majority regardless the court of our dreams right I say our in my Gen Xers minds are these people who think that this court is going to save them the quarter that's gone it's dead that's been killed we cannot hope that the court is going to do this and we have a democratic leadership that is unwilling to pack the courts and up until at least now is unwilling to get rid of the filibuster and is unwilling to play hardball with its own members in the Senate so you can have the best voting legislation out there the John Lewis Voting Rights Act but if the Republicans are saying we're not going to vote for any Democrat we're not going to give you ten like ten votes towards a democratic initiative ha ha especially when it's aimed at rolling back the laws that have been passed in the states that are going to benefit us you think we're going to go in there and we're going to help you out fat chance so the filibuster they'll use it every time they just did it right on a test vote in the infrastructure bill right so what's the way around that well you get rid of the filibuster it's not happening it's not happening you know Biden for the first time go well maybe we can have the talking filibuster or whatever like this I mean come on Don Lemon and CNN was fricking more on the ball with what the hell was going on than Biden was in that in that interview in that town hall that he had right and guess what voting rights can't go through reconciliation at least is the way that it's been currently thought of so you can't do it on a fifty fifty vote unless you get rid of the filibuster or you have a carve out for that this whole nonsense of sitting there working with Republicans and try to come up with some bipartisan stuff is just that it's nonsense at this point it's like I mean I don't know who you need to shake to get that out of their heads it's just nonsense the bipartisan coalition is non-existent in official Washington politics and for the most part in most state legislators now the bipartisan compromise the bipartisan agenda is in the people if you are that if you are worried that much about being bipartisan look at the freaking polling Medicare for all look at the polling on that Democrats and Republicans alike look at this infrastructure bill wide support Democrats and Republicans alike look at the the covid relief bill huge support Democrats Republicans alike right it's only the electeds in DC that are out of touch so if we're trying to craft a bipartisan compromise with those people you're you're in fantasy land you need to get out with people if that's so important to you that's where the case needs to be made and I'm not just talking about on cable news so anyways that just got that infuriated me and it was and it was and it it double infuriated me this week in part because excuse me right here in Pennsylvania we had two things right that basically had a direct impact on voting rights right number one we saw Pennsylvania right decertified um the was it Tioga when I say no 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 what was it uh my god I'm gonna it's gonna kill me it's gonna kill me that I just pulled it out Fulton County I'm sorry Fulton County officials right they um they basically decertify the voting machines there because of this whole fricking nonsense about there being uh you know voter fraud they turned over the voting machines basically all the information over to some private company with no experience in working with election with elections and what do they do they handed over to them so it's okay well you just broke the law we can all you all those machines that you just handed over decertified you can never use those machines again now Fulton County is going to have to pay all this money for it yep it's the second county after Maricopa County in Arizona the same thing happened right because that's because of you know wannabe governor Doug Mastriano right and his whole kind of initiative in Pennsylvania to kind of like like stoke the voter fraud um fires right so that happened there and then the second thing that happened that you know and you know all credits to Sean you know Sean did tell me to kind of like make sure I'm sitting down and I'm not chewing something while I'm while I read the story he sent it to me initially when it first broke that Governor Wolf Governor Tom Wolf goes out and basically says you know what he's not really opposed to voter ID laws no it was just a it is a specific way that the Republicans were talking about it you know they're he wasn't he just wasn't meeting the requirements you know voter ID though by itself is not a problem you know it's like I I'd be open to that right I'm like it takes literally no work to shut your effing mouth right Republicans were basically were there was going down you know it was in a death spiral was going nowhere he had vetoed the stuff stuff went away right it would have taken a whole lot for Republicans get out but he comes out and he says that guess what can you guess what happened next let me give you the headlines from Penn Life right this is from the 21st PA Republicans are bringing their election bill back after Governor Tom Wolf said he's open to voter ID changes are you kidding me of course that's what they're going to do of course that's what they're going to do here's how it went down I I'm just going to read for the the top the the top lines for the for the paragraph this is from Angelo Angelo Columbus of Spotlight PA and Jonathan lie of the Philly Inquirer from their story all right uh oh hey wait I'm gonna before I get into that I'm gonna bring Chris on Chris is calling in Chris can you hear me
hello do you hear me
yeah I hear you how you doing man
yeah man I thought I'd just come in uh in case you're lonely
I am hey man what's what's on your mind it's good to hear your voice
yeah I have uh I had the day off so I've been writing letters and to my county commissioners and uh I've been I was really appreciative of Sean doing the live tweet of the York County Commissioners meeting last week and uh I've been given a lot of thought to all of that I don't know if you saw any of that um but I'm I I wish I had gone down I had a reason I couldn't be there and uh and be like the one person or the one of two people to speak on behalf of reason but you know
good luck
I I'm sort of wondering if the winning argument for people if there is a winning argument is that you know if you investigate York County and find a hundred cases of fraud um the fact is they're going to have to do an audit over because this one is not going to be legally binding right and on top of that the way they're doing it is also destroying any evidence so if they're really concerned about voter fraud this is just making it going to be impossible to um to prosecute anyone and I've been thinking about it I'm sort of wondering you know Mastriano knows what he's doing right I mean it is it possible that the goal really is to just obfuscate all of the evidence to the point that we can have no certainty even if even if we have audits we cannot trust what they are it's always an open question it's it's always bothered me why they never asked for a recount uh back in November and then start talking about an audit before they the window closed about asking for a recount that you know usually if you don't ask for a recount then you shut up about it you know
no I look I think it's exactly what you just said right I mean once I mean here here's the problem the problem that happens I think from like a lot of folks like a lot of I hate to use the word say normal but from like normal like folks to like to progressive right on that spectrum right is that you you know you have some some you're wedded somewhat to the idea that you know there's rules to the game and people are going to play by the rules and yes they're going to have differences opinions and all that other kind of stuff but they're they're essentially playing with the you know on the with the same like relative ground rules like you go to court you present your case and somebody decides like that's kind of like the way that I think most people think this stuff goes down what the game that they're playing like Mastriano and these kind of you know the right has been playing um is exactly what you just said it's about to undermine the very basis of trust and certainty to begin with right so ultimately like it doesn't matter look they're playing a long game here and the long game that they're playing is one that says we can never trust the outcomes of any election so then everything becomes just about perspective and opinion right and in that kind of world that's the world that's freaking scares the crap out of me to be honest with you because when we're in that rule I mean that is the setup I mean if you read anything on kind of authoritarianism and things this is one of the the step ones right you undermine existing authorities that are arbiters of facts and and kind of like reliable information right and you basically pull you know you pull everything into question and if you if you think about it it's like you know you couple that with the fact that the vast majority of people these days um are don't have tons of spare time to sit around and arbitrate things for themselves you know we rely upon like media and experts to a certain degree and but if that field has basically you know left the building right and you know you have like Fox News and Newsmax and MSNBC and all this stuff and you know they're creating their own bubbles and they're speaking to their kind of own kind of constituencies in world because that's what the market demands then you have someone like Mastriano who comes in and what they're doing is just undermining that kind of that's kind of trust you know I mean and I think that you know you see this exactly what's going on in York County you know and this is what you know Mastriano hasn't you know hasn't officially gotten into the governor's race yet um but he will and uh you know it's it's deeply problem problematic and so you know when you when you see this I I know it's like you say well do they actually think why did they just call for the real color do they actually think that this is gonna no they don't care they honestly don't care they don't care about the facts
I uh I emailed Senator Kristen Phillips though who's my Senator State Senator and after the last session of the Seth Grove election hearings and uh I just said do you do you really believe that Mark Zuckerberg giving money to some nonprofit because because he touched it through the election off and you know she actually wrote me back and I'll give her credit she usually does write me back when I write her but um her answer was very interesting it was Mike our can my constituents believe Her answer was very interesting. It was, my, our, my constituents believe that it's true.
Right.
Right? And she didn't, that said more than had she said, no, I don't believe it. Um, and what was interesting at the York County Commissioners Meeting is that one of the people in the angry mob actually said. Uh, you know, like if the cost of the election machines is the issue. I'm sure we could find a few million dollars between us to, to pay for this. And I, and I thought, you know, this, this is why. Um, and maybe I'm going out on a limb a little bit, the, the, the Mark Zuckerberg thing really comes off as anti-Semitic to me. Um, that, you know, if a Jew touches a mu- touches the money or a rich Jew touches the money. Suddenly it's a problem, but when it's these guys in the York County courthouse who are one of us. Then it's okay, you know, and, and I know that people aren't thinking on that level about all of this, but. It's, it's just, as you know, it's absolutely ridiculous and it's infuriating to see my own. And you have this, everyone in Pennsylvania has this. It's infuriating to see your own elected leaders just in, in getting involved in this.
No, but I mean, like, but there's your perfect example, right? So I was talking about like, like early in the show too, it's like. Mark Zuckerberg is, is like, he's, he's a great foil for these people. Right? Because I think exactly right. Like, I mean, I think you're right to kind of say, or at least to raise the question, right? Like. How does this play into those kind of anti-Semitic tropes that kind of exist there, right? So you've got, Zuckerberg is great for like, for a range of reasons, right? Number one, right? Uh, he's like a Harvard educated elite. Right? Number two, he's from Silicon Valley and big tech, which is one of their kind of whipping ponies right now. Right? And kind of, and has traditionally been in the camp of, say, democratic voters. Right? And then third, right? He's like, now there's all these scandals about Facebook kind of manipulating things, right? Or having this kind of like, like this power, right? And they banned Trump.
Right.
Right? And so, and then you put all that together and like, you know, everything else within the kind of the rising white nationalism and white supremacy discourse. Whether you're talking overt or kind of like, you know, second order kind of argumentation, it's kind of stuff that's like Tucker Carlson does and things like this. It really helps stoke those flames, right? If the guy is also a Jew.
Right.
Right? Because it fits into that, to that framework. And you know, look, Zuckerberg doesn't even help himself, right? I mean, Zuckerberg is. He's like, you know, no friend of democracy, that's for sure. Right? But, uh, you know. It, it's fascinating. And you, but you think about it, it's like, who are there, you know, who living their life on a daily basis? That's not like, you know, in like the pit of politics like I am, right? Like all the time, or like you are, like deeply involved. Who, who is gonna be able to put those, who's gonna put all that stuff together? About what's actually going on there. Right? Especially when, when there's no overt arguments saying that directly. And that, that's what's, that's what's so difficult about this.
So similarly, the rumor that's been going around about Governor Wolf. Having not read the election bill that he didn't, that he vetoed. I've been trying to find where he actually said he didn't read the bill. Did that, did they just make that up? And then just like, uh, my own representative, Mike Jones, went on Governor Wolf's. Personal Facebook page to call him out for not reading it. And I'm, I'm trying to figure out where this even came from.
I, I can't find it either. If it, if it is out there, one, anybody that is out there, you can kind of drop that. Kind of like, send it to me, a ragingchickenpress@gmail.com. I'd love to see like, um, the source for that. I haven't seen that. After I looked around for, I was, did the same thing you did. I looked around and said, well, when did Wolf say this? Or when did this kind of come out?
Why would he say something so stupid to them, you know?
Right. I think what they, I think what they, what they did, what the right did. Was basically say, oh, cause now that he says he's open to voter ID because it didn't do these things. They said, oh, this is an opportunity. So he says he's up for it because the bill, but our bill did do those things. So he just didn't read the bill. I think that's how it played out, but you know. I'm willing to be proved wrong on that one, but it's, uh, you know, it is what it is.
Yeah, man.
Crazy.
Well, thanks for chatting with me.
Oh man, thanks for calling in. I, it's, uh, always makes my day that much brighter to talk to somebody other than myself.
I can keep talking if you want.
Well, it's good. You got anything else on your mind?
Well, I'll just give a shout out. I'm really digging the Sisters of the Night, uh.
Night Caucus Podcast, yeah.
I'm, uh, enjoying it. The Lieutenant Governor Brew to X is, uh, on my mind. A lot. And, uh, and I, I'm really appreciative of what they're doing and. Um, really is curious to see how this redistricting works out with everything. And, um, it's, it's again, I've, maybe it's, I see it from Seth Grove and not from others, but. You know, that they're trying to have public hearings that are partisan, of course. And to make it look like it, the will of the people is going against the courts when they inevitably do something that isn't going to work. Um, I mean, it's, they're already setting the chessboard. I mean, they're not even hiding it anymore. I mean, it's, it's, maybe it's just I'm paying attention more, but. Uh, it's just so obvious what they're setting up and, um. And that's what we have to look forward to the next couple of months.
Yeah, yeah. And it's gonna, I mean, it's, it's gonna be with us all like right through the, uh, the midterm elections, um, you know, in one form or another. But, uh, I, you know, I do think, you know. I think that slowly but surely there have been a growing number of reporters that have, are kind of like. You know, queued into stuff. So I think that we're seeing a little bit more talked about more explicitly now, um, than had been true in the past. Um, but you know, I'm always very aware of. You know, the people who are following politics. To that degree that are looking at these kind of maneuvers that are happening, whether it's Democrats, Republicans, whatever it may, I, I think that most people are not following that closely. Right? So the real challenge in my mind is like, how do we, how do we. Communicate that more broadly, right? In a way that is going, that is, that does not, that does not require people to go down the rabbit hole with us. Right? You know, you know, I always think about this in terms of like, you know, cause I teach rhetoric, right? And one of the things that, you know. I always make this distinction is between, you know, what, what Plato did, you know, talked about the distinction between the philosophers and the, and the rhetoricians. Or, and how I would talk, well, forget Plato, but this, how I would talk about those things, like, you know, in philosophy, you're trying to understand the problem for what it is, right? You're trying to understand like what, you know, what's its essence, right? What's at its kind of, it's or what's the truth of the matter, capital T is. Right? In rhetoric in my mind, it's saying like, okay. How do I then make that actionable in the world? Right? And there's this, this guy who did this translation of some of Aristotle's work and says that, you know, say the dialectic precedes rhetoric, right? This guy Kennedy. And one of the things that, that always stuck in my mind about that is meant that like, no, it's like, there's the rhetoricians, of course, who, who'll go out and say whatever it is. That sounds good, but they have no kind of, they're not wedded to anything on the planet, right? There, there's no grounding. It's just for personal gain or opportunism. Right? There's that. But what, what, what he was saying, what Aristotle was trying to say is like, no, the dialectic is something different, right? Where you're trying to understand a problem, trying to really understand what's going on. Right? And then once one does that, right? Once one is at a point where, and then you have like a decision point, right? Cause there's, that, that's an endless pursuit. But at some point, when a decision point comes on, you're thinking, you're, you're taking that thinking, you're having to communicate it now, right? For an actionable reason i- in a particular moment to a particular audience, how do you do that? Right? And I think what happens a lot of, you know, again, like I work in, you know, academia, so a lot of the, the mistakes I think of academics. What they do is they say, okay, I need to explain everything to everybody about the journey that I just went on so that they can come to the same conclusions that I had, right? I need to do like a Socratic dialogue with them, right? And really what we need to be thinking about is like, how do we have these conversations with, you know, the people in our, you know, in our community? Um, that are, that is meaningful to them, right? That doesn't kind of glaze their eyes over. And I, I don't know the answer to this one, right? I mean, this is something I struggle with all the time. And thinking about, you know, and you know, really, I think really the answer is, and you know, this is the, um. You know, this is Jane McAleavy's thing. There are no shortcuts. The end, you know, the, the answer is in organizing. It's not messaging. Right? It's actually building relationships in our community with people that are kind of working to fight for, for things that are gonna help them out. Right? And I think that in there is where we kind of get to see these things that can discuss them, but.
Yeah, I like what you're talking there and, um, you probably don't know, I teach informal logic on the college level as an adjunct and. Uh, let me tell you, kettle logic has been a lot easier to teach lately. You know what I mean?
Yes.
That seems to be like the abstract thing that students say, you know, who would ever argue like that? And like, here it is every day on television. Um, that without getting really into theory, you know, shifting toward the object, right? That you can tell me all of what you want to tell me about abortion or whatever the issue is. But the, the fact in front of us or the nature of what is happening in front of us. Has completely gotten lost because the political language has become like secondary literature. To the suffering of people right in front of us. And cutting to the chase. It frustrates me when I don't hear Democrats doing that. Um, you know, that it sort of falls into the expected parameters about ID cards and so forth, right? All we have to do is talk about the, the issues with disabled voters in the voting bill. And that's reason enough not to vote for it, right? Um, you know, that it requires two people from two parties at a polling station to witness somebody voting now. Um, so. I don't know, I don't know if that's rhetorically effective, but it's something I'm thinking a lot about too, is how, how do we message? And talk to people in these ways that just cut to, cut to the chase and. That seems like, you know, Pennsylvania Dutch type people around here would be willing to like, that's what being Dutch is about. Cut, cut to the chase, right? And, um, I don't know if it's just that people know it's not effective, or it's just that in a post-truth society. Uh, we need to try it again. Um, I'm just thinking out loud.
I, I, I do think so. I mean, look, I mean, there's a reason why like PA stands up, for example, has been so successful in the state in organizing folks. And there's a reason why like DSA, right? Um, Democratic Socialist America have been so successful in organizing folks in kind of, in kind of different areas. You know, but you know, um, you, you see like Jonathan Smucker, for example, worked with, uh, you know, kind of Lancaster stand up. And then we see kind of like that exploding is, you know, they basically said, we're just gonna, we're gonna organize around people's issues and what they care about. And we're gonna organize around people. We're not gonna organize like Democrats and Republicans first. You know, and I think that really is the model going forward is to say, let's, let's organize around problems, right? And then push Republicans and Democrats, right? In the directions that they need to go. I mean, that, that's, that's the, the flip side of this. We, you know, the, the fact that the Republicans have kind of like left the planet in terms of like truth. Right? Uh, and, and kind of any wedded to, you know, community interest that is beyond the community of, say billionaires of the wealth class. Right? Or the kind of, you know, the people who have an investment in white supremacy. Um, the fact that they've gone off, you know, gone off that, that edge. Um, the, the Democrats, on the other hand, um, have, i- instead of turning towards the people. They've kind of followed the Republicans and think that there's, they still need to talk to them, right? And still need to point out to everybody else like what the Republicans are doing, blah, blah, blah. Really, they need to get back to some roots of organizing in communities. That's where the success is, right? They need to get back into those institutions that are kind of like, are problem solving in those communities. Um, and then yes, when elections come up and so on, but you know, this is what happens like in between elections. And, you know, I think we're at a really interesting moment right now. Um, you know, in the aftermath of the Trump election with the Women's March, with Indivisible, what we see. With, you know, PA stands up and the stands up kind of like, you know, like across the thing, the DSA, DSA, I mean, could point to all these different organizations that are. That are working, you know, it's very hopeful in my mind. Make the roads another one. It's just been doing amazing work.
So last thing I'll leave you with, last thing I'll leave you with is that. Uh, in, I've noticed in York County, the libertarians are out running for lots of offices, uh, the deadlines coming up. To get on the ballot, um, I think August 4th or something like that. And I don't know if it's the state libertarian party or the national libertarian party has challenged. Like a thousand local level people running for local office. And I saw that. Uh, York has 10 and, um, I have to say, that's pretty respectable. That's pretty respectable to get that many out and.
Yeah.
At the same time, like, I, I'd rather have some Republicans in office than libertarians, but, um. And I don't know what the public perception of them is. But I spoke around their website a little bit and it's interesting that they've been really calling out the election nonsense also. Um, and I, I don't know if that's a winning message for them, but, um, but it's, but they're organizing, so, uh, they're doing it.
Yeah, heads up all. I, I get worried anytime I see libertarians. Cause then I'm like, okay, where's the money? Where's the money coming from? That's what I want to know. That's always the answer.
I say to my students whenever they say, well, you know, how's, how's voting for two parties been working out for you? And I'm like. Just cause you have a third option doesn't mean it's a good option, right?
Exactly, exactly.
Thanks for chatting, man.
You know, and again, it, you know, it's Jane McAleavy's, McAleavy's stuff too. There are no shortcuts. And like, I, I, you know, I'm, I'm a believer that. You know, any like viable third party option is gonna come out, is gonna come out of a split of the, uh, uh, within the, one of the existing parties.
Right.
And you know, it's about building capacity and power within that, you know? And I think that thi- this has never been, for me, it's like, this is why you organize inside the Democratic Party to build power. Is because you, you're always, your, your two options are open. One, that you're able to fundamentally transform the Democratic Party. Into something that is actually fighting for people, right? In the ways that it proclaims to want to do. Or you build up such a capacity that it becomes then viable to then to part ways. Right? I mean, I mean, that seems to me to be the, you know, it's, it's the, the uneasy. Long haul answer, but I think that's, that's kind of the way history works, but especially in this country. Anyways, man, hey, listen, I really, I really appreciate you calling in tonight. It's, uh, been fun chatting.
Thank you. See you later.
Alright, take it easy, Chris. Thanks much. Very, very cool. Uh, love talking to Chris there. Um, and you know, everybody is out there too as well. This is what you could do, right? You can call into the show. We can have a little conversation. It's fantastic. Um, so let me just say one more thing then, um, before I kind of get to close off. Anybody else does want to kind of jump in, that's feel free. If you got other comments that you want to throw in YouTube, that's great. Um, that was, uh, Chris, uh, Chris and I talked a little bit about. The, uh, Governor Wolf, so I'm not gonna go back into where I started there. That was so frustrating when he said he was gonna return, go back and voter ID. That was just, that's crazy. But the one thing that, this is now, has pushed me over, like over the edge. So we saw, I get, you gotta close out with the billionaires in space, right? So, um, you know, whatever, um. You know, you got Virgin Galactic, you got, you know, Sir Richard Branson going up in Virgin Galactic in his thing. And then followed by Jeff Bezos shortly afterwards. And Jeff Bezos, um, I, I've got it, my one sound drop. Uh, for future shows, it's gonna be his laughter, which is kind of like the most, just like, like makes my stomach turn, I have to say. But, um. There's so much in that. And, uh, Paris Marx was a, you remember Paris Marx? He was on the show. He's a, um, he's, he runs the podcast. Tech Won't Save Us, um, does just freaking great work over there. And, uh, he was on the show back in, um, well, God, it was. Still 2020, I guess. It was the fall of 2020. Uh, he was on Democracy Now! this week talking about Bezos. And he did a really excellent job on Democracy Now!, kind of, uh, laying out, um, some of the critiques of, um. Of kind of what, you know, Bezos' vision and all this other kinds of stuff. If you listen to his podcast, Tech Won't Save Us, um, he kind of did a follow-up. Um, he had a piece in the Jacobin, right? So that was an article he wrote in the Jacobin. He was on Democracy Now! And his latest podcast is kind of like. Stuff that he didn't get to in that article, which was really good, especially it's about the two visions of, say, Elon Musk. And, um, um, Jeff Bezos about the kind of the futures. But one thing I wanna, I wanna suggest, um. Is that, um, I think Peter Ward was the other guest on, on Democracy Now! And I'm reading his book right now. Um, and it's about the commercialization of space and so on. And, and so I've got this thought and you've heard me talk about this multiple times and I, and. What I think I'm gonna do is I'm gonna try to do this initially as once a month. Um, and I think I'm gonna call the segment something like Left Space, right? Um, or Space Left, something like this. Where we're kind of looking at what is happening in the space industry and space exploration and that kind of stuff and. Um, try to tease out some different threads of that conversation. Um, and those threads run. Along these kind of tracks, right? So first. As you've heard me talk about on our regular Friday show and Out to Good Podcast and our last call, when I talk about space news, talking about galactic capitalism, right? And galactic capitalism is the direction, right? Or the vector, if you will. Of what we see in the space industry and what we see with Elon Musk and Jeff Bezos and all this. And, you know, it's what happens if we project out where we are now into the directions of that, that, you know, these. You know, corporations are taking that. And it, it's, it's deeply disturbing to me because on the one hand, let, let's just assume, okay, let's, let's, we have these fantasies of these. Billionaires about colonies on Mars by 2030 and, you know, Jeff Bezos wants to move all polluting industries into kind of the atmosphere. You know, or into the, into orbit. It's like, whatever. Um, ultimately, if, if you take away their dreams and their, and their, the language and the discourse they use to describe what they're doing and you look at. they use to describe what they're doing, and you look at what is happening at policy and what is happening with the actual the industry itself, that is moving forward. And the real question is going to be, who is going to own these resources? And who is going to have access to space? So let me just give you just kind of an example of what I mean by this. Is going back to like the 1980s or so, there has been people who have been actively pursuing entrepreneurs who've been trying to figure out how do you actually say mine resources on asteroids or other planets or the moon? Okay? It's never been commercially viable. It's never been viable even, you know, just in technologically viable up until now. As it's become more viable, right, you have SpaceX kind of going up regularly and kind of rockets, building that kind of thing. You have the Artemis program that is actually planning on going back to the moon. And you have active discussions about finding these minerals. China has now entered that same kind of race, looking for the same kind of stuff. At some point, this is going to happen. NASA has has made a first step this past year with the Artemis Accords or two years ago, the Artemis Accords to undermine the one international treaty that governs space. Right? The Space Treaty. The Outer Space Treaty, right? It was done by the UN. And the Artemis Accords kind of is a, you know, it's kind of like a coalition of the willing, to borrow from, I think, George Bush, right? George W. Bush, right? The coalition of the willing, right? Who are willing to be part of this project, right? But if anybody doesn't want to be willing or has got problems with it, we're going to leave them out of these accords. And so then there's the question about what we do with those kind of resources. There's that that one trajectory, the galactic capitalism route. It's an extension of what happens now. And if we allow complete uncontrolled runaway capitalists to control that process. Let's just say they do get their hands on one of these kind of like quadrillion dollar asteroids. And they are going to control that asteroid and all those minerals and resources on this. They get to dictate the terms for us. And why does this matter? Well, you know, we didn't get a chance to talk about this tonight, but I'm going to see if I can get her on the program at some point. Thea Riofrancos has got this piece that this came out about a month ago. It's called "The Rush to Go Electric Comes with the Hidden Costs: Destructive Lithium Mining." Okay, this is a great article. This was in, was it an opinion piece? It was published in The Guardian. And asking us to really think hard about this move to electric vehicles. She's like, yes, we need to get away from any fossil fuels whatsoever. But the way that we do that, right? It doesn't come out of nowhere, it doesn't come out of air. Right? The batteries that power electric vehicles and our cell phones, right? And our laptops and all this depend on lithium. And lithium comes from mines. Right? And very often those mines or where the lithium is has been on indigenous land. We can't turn away from that. Right? But let's take it more broadly. All these minerals, all these resources, all these metals, all these rare earth elements and stuff that we're kind of depending upon are not infinite, they're finite. And if somebody grabs, say, an asteroid, just to use that example, that's got all these minerals on it and things like this, they essentially have a stranglehold over the entire planet. Right? Again, this might not be for 100 years. But there's trajectories we can follow. Up until now, this has been the work of science fiction. Now, this is getting worked out in real time in terms of science policy or space policy and space politics. All right? So that's that kind of one thread. The second thread has to do with, well, is there a left space? Right? Is there an agenda to go to space that is rooted in left or progressive traditions? Right? That's not just all kind of like, you know, fantasy. But if we think about it, right? Is there an alternative? And what does that alternative look like? Right? And there's some great work in that regard. Right? Then finally, it's about pushing back. It's about examination of the discourse around what is actually happening in space and how people are responding to it. So as much as I like what I see a lot of the criticisms that have come up about Jeff Bezos and everything, which I mean, again, it's like taking, I mean, it's like shooting fish in a barrel with that guy. Right? I mean, it's easy to kind of criticize that dude and things that he said. It's just unbelievable what he said. We're going to get into that in future programs, but if we say, for example, how can we go to space if there's people starving in the streets? Okay? That argument, that equation suggests there is one pie. And there's only so much to go around. If you want to make sure that people have something to eat, no space for you. If you want to make sure that people have medical care, no military for you, no tax cuts for you, right? This is the discourse that we've been inhabited. This has been enabled in large part by neoliberalism, right? Everything results in a balance sheet. But as I've been talking about on this show for a bit now, as I get to understand it more, modern monetary theory, right? If you look at the work of Stephanie Kelton, for example, and her deficit myth, she wants to break us from that way of thinking, especially in a country like the United States that has a fiat currency. In other words, we control our monetary policy. The government is this is issues the currency. Our dollar is not pegged to somebody else's. Right? The argument of monetary modern monetary theory has to do with inflation or limited resources is not the issue. The government can't go broke. Right? It's about always having to match the release of money with capacity. So in other words, because there's a real need for medical care, right? Or because there's a real need to build out a infrastructure that's capable of making the just transition to off fossil fuels for a kind of like, you know, healthy climate future. Those are real, that's real work and things that have to happen in the world. The government can actually just issue the money and build those programs. And as long as there's a capacity and the need to go there, it's not going to increase inflation. Right? And I don't want to go all into that right now, but modern monetary theory asks us to rethink how we understand what the money is. And these are economists that have that have been studying this stuff and say, we've got it wrong up until now. Or at least the last, you know, 50 years or so. So those those things. So the way that we talk about it, right? I mean, I think there's a legitimate argument to have about whether or not we should go to space. Right? If this is of value, you know, all this kind of stuff. I my tendency is to think, yes, it is of value. To what extent? I don't know. Is now the time? I'm not so sure. Right? So those are the kind of discussion we have to look through. How we make our arguments are going to have impacts in here. The future, the policy that is getting enacted as we speak on a daily basis is going to have an impact on our lives on Earth. Especially when it comes to who has power and control and is going to determine the course of the future. Right? But also how we make our arguments against, say billionaires controlling all this stuff is also going to a matter. Because if we start saying, look, look, there's no money, then we are reinforcing a discourse that is being used to hurt us all. So that's the kind of stuff I want to get into that show. So I think that I think I've worked it out enough where I'm going to be able to do it about once a month. Got a cool logo for it and things like this. I'm not sure when I'm going to launch the first show. But it seems like after this week and watching the media coverage of everything that's gone on this week, it's it's, yes, it's viable. And I'm putting together a course that I'm going to be teaching at Kostan University about this too as well. So I figured now or never, right? So anyways, all right, I went way longer than I was going to go tonight. But it was it was a good time. I'm so glad, Christopher, thank you again, once again for calling in, man. I appreciate it. It's always great kind of talking to folks who are listening and hear what's on your mind. I hear what's happening around the state and around the country. And on Wednesday, going to be back with Cyril Micalenko. Hopefully Cyril and I, we've been like going like like gangbusters in like both of us in different different ways over the past couple of weeks. So we'll talk a little bit about what we're going to be able to do on our show on Wednesday. Got some kind of ideas about that. I'm sure he does too as well. So I'll let you know what we got coming up on a Wednesday. But look for the Wednesday show with Cyril Micalenko this coming Wednesday. And on Friday, yay, Sean and I should be back again. It feels like I barely talk to the guy anymore. But this week we will be back on Friday, once again, Friday morning, right around 11 o'clock. Look for us on YouTube. And want to remind you that you can also kind of join our Discord. There's information about that in today's show notes. You can always join the show live on YouTube or on riverside.fm. And you can also pick up this podcast wherever you get your podcast. And make sure you let everybody else know. I mean, I can't tell you, one of the greatest things, the greatest things that happened to me this week was having a kind of a you know, a candidate for district attorney show up on my door. That was like phenomenal to begin with. But it was also amazing to hear like, wait, because I had my raging chicken hat on. She's like, raging chicken? I know raging chicken, so yeah, that's my pocket. Wait, that's your podcast, right? She had already listened to the show and, you know, that was that was kind of cool too as well. So that kind of way, getting the word out, letting people know about what we're doing is actually phenomenal. And if you can find it in your heart of hearts and you got the room in your wallet, if you can become a patron of this show, by going to patreon.com/rcpress, becoming a patron for as little as five bucks a month. Again, we've been growing the show, we've been adding shows on, we're kind of looking at a whole different kind of range of things that we can do. We're probably going to be doing some more pre-recorded interviews with candidates coming up. It's getting incredibly exciting time. So if you can come get ahead and you support the show, become a patron, five bucks a month, go to patreon.com/rcpress today. Thank you, everybody.